...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The invocation, Janet.
I'm looking for it, one moment, please. Dear God, as always, we thank you for bringing us together safely this evening and for the many blessings we enjoy. Thank you for the opportunity of new beginnings. We ask for your wisdom and strength to be constant as we begin a new term of service for the residents of the city of Hammond, and we pray we can make a difference. Please guide us with dedication, commitment, and humility as we serve the residents of our fine city. We pray that you keep us safe from harm and guard those who protect us, particularly the two Gary police officers who were shot this afternoon. Please protect them and in your holy name we pray, amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show nine present, zero absent. At this moment, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, could I interrupt real quick?
Yes, sir.
This pertaining to the councilwoman's prayer. I was talking to the mayor, Gary. He just informed me that both of his officers are in stable condition. Thankfully, unfortunately, it was a shootout and the defendant did not make it. So at least, I mean, God bless everybody involved, but the two officers are safe. I just wanted to start off the meeting because I know the councilwoman was praying for them, so I thought everybody should know that.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion for the election of council officers.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
At this time, I'd like to nominate Councilman David Warple as president.
Second.
Point of order, we need a motion to entertain, a motion for the election.
Oh, okay. I move that we open the floor for the election of council president and vice president.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Spatelli. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. This time, I'll entertain nominations for president of the council.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I nominate Fifth District Councilman David Warple for president.
Being nominated, are there any others? Are there any other nominations for president?
I second the nomination.
Nominations for president are closed, thank you. Just hope that we run the meetings orderly and professionally and.
We have to vote.
Oh, yeah, that's right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now for the office of vice president.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I nominate Sixth District Councilman Scott Rakels as vice president.
Councilman Rakels has been nominated as vice president. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, would you like to say anything, Councilman Rakels?
No, thank you for the confidence.
I just want to welcome our two new council members to the council. This is their first meeting, Katrina Alexander at large and Councilman Tyler down there by Councilman Rakels. Congrat, welcome to the Hammond City Council.
Thank you.
Okay, item, it's item three on the agenda, the reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
The most accepted minutes from December 16th, 2019. Be placed on file, please.
Motion made. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Emerson. Roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
I move to approve claims dated 1/3/2020 and ending with claims dated 1/8/2020, claim one through claim two thirty-six inclusive.
Is there an amount on net? Is there an amount on net, Scott or Councilman Rakels?
Yes, the amount is eight million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
The motion has been made by Councilman Rakels to approve the claims, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, motion carries, nine in favor, no one opposed. Item five on the agenda, public hearings. Clerk Golick.
Item eight, resolution nineteen R dash thirty-five, sponsored by two petitioners, the Department of Planning and Development from the mayor's office and Councilman P. Torres. A declaratory resolution designating that a certain area of the city of Hammond be established as a Twenty-Four Marble Street Economic Revitalization Area to which deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the common council of the city of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one.
Is there anyone here that wants to speak on this issue during public hearing? Please state your name and address.
Anthony Higgs, former councilman of the Third District of the city of Hammond. I just would like to know what's the total property value for this particular Twenty-Four Marble Street?
Does anybody else wish to speak under public hearing?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
It's worth basically nothing right now. It's been empty for the better part of twenty years. We used to have a company named Flexicor located here. They went out of business, I think, Councilman Mark, before I took over, before we took over, they were out of business already. I walked the property about a year ago and I was scared and it was, the old company was still there. I walked the company very recently and it's basically down to the dirt. All demolitions have been taken care of. It's twenty-four acres. It wasn't worth very much before, so I can't imagine it's worth much assessed value-wise, but its potential value is limitless. It's a twenty-four acre piece of property. It's going to be clean dirt certified by the state and we have a lot of Illinois manufacturing companies that are looking to move their operations into Hammond, so the value that it could be worth is a heck of a lot more than it's worth right now. But I don't know exactly what it's worth, but it's basically peanuts compared to what we're talking about. And what we're asking the council to do is, even though we don't have a specific developer at this time, we did, the deal fell apart unfortunately over the holidays, however, we do have a developer and the developer has a couple of tenants possible, and what we're asking the council to do is to give us the ability, by passing this, you take red tape out of the equation. Once we make a deal with any type of vendor, any type of developer that wants to lease this property, we have to come back to the council with the incentive package anyway. So we're asking you to do this just to clear it up and give us, you know, better market, you know, better chance to market this property.
Mr. President.
Councilman.
Just to put it clear, then, what we're doing is creating the possibility of a package to the group. This isn't acknowledging that we're giving a package. This is just giving us permission to consider giving an abatement or whatever the package might be.
Absolutely true, Councilman. It's just giving us the ability to package a deal, to land a big company from, you know, from Illinois. And we do have great developers and they have a couple tenants in mind. At this point, we thought we were going to approach you with a specific tenant, a specific plan. Unfortunately, like I said, that fell apart over the holidays, but we're still moving forward and this property is going to develop. And we will have to approach the council regardless of who the developer is, with zoning issues, with incentive issues. We'll have to go through redevelopment and all that, but right now, this has just given us the ability to package the deal, as Councilman Kalwinski indicated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody else wish to speak on this issue?
George Stoya, Robert Stell. I'm all for the, all the, you know, the idea of incentivizing investment and all that stuff. What I'm worried about is, and I think I've raised it before with this council, is that there's no parameters set forth ever, or when you guys discuss enabling statutes like this or ordinances, excuse me, that allow guys to petition later, for God only knows what the scope of either deferred tax or reductions to assessed value. Bear in mind, I don't have to tell you guys this, but you know, we're on one, two, three caps, and I hope, I wish sometimes that you guys would outline what the scope, if there's a plan of any kind, or is this on a case-by-case basis, what sort of assessed value reductions will be permitted or allowed by virtue of whatever the statutes allow you to do, et cetera, et cetera, because this sounds like almost carte blanche. We don't know how long this thing will, how long, you know, these assessed value reductions will last, five years, ten years. I know Councilman Warple and I have discussed this openly and he argues that, you know, right now it's getting nothing. And soon, better to have something of, that's of reduced assessed value than no assessed value at all if we don't have the deal. I'm aware of that and I'm presupposing that as part of the issues and questions I'm reading.
Thank you, Councilman George. Mayor.
Mr. President, usually when we have a company that, you know, commits to the property, we figure out what type of incentive, you know, incentive, as far as assessed value is going to be added to our city, added to that particular piece of property, and usually incentive packages fall within twenty percent, sometimes higher depending on the property. That's usually where we are. By far, the developers put in a lot more than the city of Hammond does. We usually help. If it's a tax abatement, which it has to be in this case, because this is not part of a TIF district, so, I don't believe this is part of a TIF district this time, right? It's in the downtown, oh, okay. Well, it could be then TIF, or it could be tax abatement, so, but usually, it's going to be right around twenty percent to one-third max.
Anybody else wish to speak on this issue? Seeing nobody else, public hearing is closed. Item six, communications. Communications.
President.
Councilman Torres.
I'd like to announce that Hammond Park Foundation is having its annual dinner on January twenty-fifth, 2020, six o'clock reception. There's a dinner and they're offering various foods, perch, chicken, possibly sausage, beef, and so forth, at the Clipper Room, and tickets are on sale at twenty-five dollars in advance, thirty dollars at the door. They're a good organization, if they contribute to that, wish you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torres. And are there any other communications? Are there any other communications? Communications are now closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, at this time, I would like to read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Tuesday, January twenty-first, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at six thirty PM at Ophelia Steen. On Thursday, January sixteenth, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet at seven PM at the Hammond Housing Authority Building that is at fourteen oh two one hundred seventy-third Street. Also on Thursday, January sixteenth, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet at seven PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. This is everyone's opportunity to come out and hear what's going on in your neighborhood. Don't sit on Facebook and make comments, where are the police? Where are the crime watch groups? And then everybody takes off running with those comments, not knowing what is even discussed at the crime watch meetings and what information you can get at the crime watch meetings. There's always a police officer there who will be able to speak to you about what is going on citywide. It doesn't necessarily have to be for your neighborhood. So please, attend a crime watch meeting. Meet some of the police who patrol your neighborhood and also meet some of your neighbors, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Are there any other committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Ordinance, third and final reading, there are none. Item number nine, introduction of ordinances. Clerk Golick.
Item eight, ordinance twenty dash zero one, sponsored by Councilman Warple and Rakels. And ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-four oh five, being an ordinance, amending ordinance eighty-five fourteen, for an amendment to Title twenty-nine, overlay zoning districts to establish new provisions for development within the Oxbow Landing Overlay Zoning District.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for first and second reading of twenty dash zero one, with a council as a whole meeting on January twenty-seventh, beginning at five fifteen PM, and with an intent to consider.
Second.
Motion made by Janet Vines for first and second reading with an intent to consider with a committee hearing as council as a whole at five fifteen on one twenty.
Seven.
Seven. Seconded by Councilman Rakels. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item ten, resolutions. Clerk Golick.
Item eight, resolution twenty dash zero zero one, sponsored by Councilman Torres. A resolution of the Hammond City Council confirming resolution number nineteen R dash thirty-five that designated and established a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area to which deductions of assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the common council of the city of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Make a motion that we pass resolution twenty R oh one.
Motion made by Councilman Torres, seconded by?
Second.
Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This confirming resolution just last council meeting and we just had a public meeting on the declaratory resolution, this just confirms that the area, Twenty-Four Marble Street, is open and for consideration of development.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, motion carries, resolution twenty R oh one passes, nine in favor, zero against. Item B.
Item B, resolution twenty R dash zero two, sponsored by Councilman Warple and Councilman Rakels. A resolution of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, determining and approving Plan Commission Resolution twenty nineteen dash zero one as a written order approving a redevelopment commission resolution number zero seven dash twenty nineteen as an amending declaratory resolution that modified and amended the boundaries of the Gateway Redevelopment Area to include the Florida Parish Subera Expansion Area and approved an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Gateways Redevelopment Area.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
Make a motion to approve twenty R dash two.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Rakels to approve resolution twenty R dash two, seconded by Janet Vines. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Vines, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Resolution C. Clerk Golick. I'm sorry, resolu, item C, resolution twenty R oh three.
Item C, a resolution sponsored by Councilwoman Alexander. A resolution to honor the late Dr. J. Watkins for extraordinary public service to the people and particularly to the children of the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I request that the resolution twenty R dash oh three be read in its entirety by the clerk.
Is there a motion to pass it?
Yes.
A motion, a motion has been made to pass resolution.
I'll second it.
By Councilwoman Alexander, seconded by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion? Now you want it read in its entirety by the clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Clerk Golick, could you read that resolution in its entirety, please?
Whereas Walter Jerome Watkins was born in East Chicago, Indiana, on May sixteenth, nineteen forty-seven, to the late Rose Miller and Emmanuel Sims. He inherited a rich legacy of faith, family, friends, and leadership. Walter professed the hope in Christ at an early age. Whereas Walter was educated by East Chicago Public School System, where he graduated from Roosevelt High School, the class of nineteen sixty-five. After graduating, he then went on to receive his BS in U.S. History from Indiana University, Bloomington, Indiana. In nineteen seventy-seven, he received his master's in secondary education reading from Indiana Purdue at Indianapolis, Indiana. Wanting to continue achieving his educational goal, Walter went on to receive his PhD from Purdue University West Lafayette, December two thousand two. Whereas Dr. Walter Watkins dedicated his life to the cities, to the students of the school city of Hammond for the past forty-two years. He was hired as a reading teacher at Eggers Middle School in October of nineteen seventy-seven. After nine years in the classroom, Dr. Watkins served as assistant principal of Eggers Middle School for three years. He was then promoted to serve Eggers Middle School for five years. In July nineteen ninety-seven, Walter moved to central administration to assume the role of Director of Secondary Curriculum and Instruction. In December two thousand two, Dr. Walter J. Watkins was appointed as the first African-American superintendent for the school city of Hammond. He served as a superintendent for sixteen years. Whereas Dr. Watkins felt that some of the most significant accomplishments that occurred during his tenure were implementation of a full-day kindergarten district-wide, implementation of the Television and Broadcast Academy at the Area Career Center, as well as implementation of the Hammond Academy Performing Arts at Morton High School. Dr. Watkins worked collaboratively with the school board and the teachers' federation to support the growth of our students. This collaborative atmosphere under his leadership was also the reason that both referenda were passed in the fall of two thousand seventeen. The capital referenda enabled the school city of Hammond to construct a new secondary school that will open in twenty twenty-one. Whereas his civic awards include Outstanding Work in Education, nineteen eighty-eight, NAACP Joeland Alexander Leadership Award, PTA State and National Life, Northwest Indiana Urban Principles Award for Dedicated Service, honored by the Black History Committee for being the first African-American superintendent in the city of Hammond, Indiana, honored by the Ministerial Alliance of Hammond and Vicinity Incorporated, Hammond Community Coalition Award for Outstanding Services, Woodmar Hammond Kiwanis Habitat for Community, Values, NAACP, Falida Kappa, and a ten-year membership. Whereas the community work of which Dr. Watkins was most proud and that had the most meaning was Habitat for Humanity and Values Organization. Each entity involves work of a different nature, yet touches the lives of people, both young and adults, in neighborhoods in Hammond. He was pleased and proud to assist families in need of outreach to achieve the dream of homeownership. He further attempted to touch the lives of students through Values, which is voice achievement life, understanding education, self-esteem. This work underscores his reason for entering the field of education. Values provided support to at-risk African-American males beyond the classroom walls. Identifying positive adult male roles and providing cultural, social, and educational experiences for these students enhanced the opportunity for success in the classroom and into adult life. Whereas on Monday, December thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, God came and collected His Angel after His long battle with kidney disease. Dr. Watkins will be missed. Many hope that the new high school building for which he worked so hard may be named the Dr. Walter J. Watkins High School if it is the desire of the community. Therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Hammond on behalf of the people of the city of Hammond that Walter J. Watkins is honored for his extraordinary public service over his long career as an educator and that the council expresses its sympathy to his surviving family.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, and since it's your first resolution, I'll give you a roll call. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Under resolutions, item D, Clerk Golick.
Resolution R dash zero four, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. A resolution reappointing Victor Frankel to the Hammond Economic Development Commission.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty R dash oh four.
Second.
Motion made for final passage and adoption of twenty R dash oh four. Motion made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Kalwinski. Motion made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Kowinski. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I would just like to point out that, uh, this is Victor's, uh, second four-year term and, uh, he met with us in caucus earlier this evening and, uh, he really enjoys serving on this commission. So, uh, I ask for your vote of confidence. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are you on the roll call? Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, uh, motion carries, uh, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item E.
Item E, Resolution twenty R dash five. A, sponsored by Councilman Emerson. A resolution confirming the reappointment of Carrie Hutton as a commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission, the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Council, Councilman Emerson.
I move for final passage, passage of twenty R dash oh-five.
Second.
Councilman Emerson makes a motion to move for final passage of twenty R oh-five, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Emerson, Councilman Emerson.
Uh, this is a reappointment of Carrie Hutton. Uh, personally want to thank her for serving on the Human Relations Commission. Uh, she is, uh, actually, I've, I've never heard anything bad about her. She's so well-qualified. And, uh, ask for your support, uh, to vote her to another term.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, motion carries nine, or nine in favor, zero opposed. Item eleven.
President, yeah.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say. President Warple, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you. I just want to remind the folks in attendance that the clipboard's up there for you to sign for public expression. Uh, item eleven, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, we met earlier this evening, uh, eh, with regard to, um, uh, ordinance number nineteen thirty-five. On our January twenty-seventh agenda, we do need a, uh, intent to consider for nineteen thirty-five.
Thank you. We'll get a content to consider. Ordinance nineteen thirty-five on the next agenda, correct?
That is correct.
Is there any other new and unfinished business? Is there any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Um, public expression, Aubrey Hill.
No, wait a minute. Anthony Higgs.
I just wanted to bring to the attention of the three at-larges, as well as the district councilmen, that there are parking issues that the community is facing when it comes to Boys and Girls Club. I know the new high school is being built with, uh, the residents are complaining about being able to park in front of their homes. Secondly, when it comes to Dr. Watkins, uh, nothing personal against him, but when Safari Brainware was implemented and I funded it along with Smith, Brazil and Warner Funeral Home and a number, uh, of people that contributed, we didn't see Dr. Watkins step to the plate in terms of addressing the needs of the African-American community. So, in respect to that, we appreciate his attributes to the City of Hammond and, eh, as it relates to the school city, but also there were a number of things that could have been done as it relates to the children of this great city.
George Staya.
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up a thought that, uh, uh, I was inquiring about last year with respect to code enforcements and the standard, with respect to whether we should, you should have eight inches or six inches with respect to code enforcement on the lawns, and which was superior. Was there any sort of resolution on that? If there was, I didn't hear it. I didn't even hear you guys vote on it. Maybe it's still pending, I don't know. Uh, so, um, again, I don't know how that came down with you guys.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Public expression is now closed. I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move that we adjourn this meeting. Everyone have a good evening.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.